Today is Monday, February 1st, 2010. I will call this meeting of Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting posted in the corner of the building over here. Corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act posted there, certainly accessible then to all members of the public. Would you please rise with us for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Van Dyke. Reader.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Under action to be taken here, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda that was included in your pack.
So I'll move, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval of the consent agenda, if you will please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative. As well approval of the full agenda, request for consent.
So I'll move, Your Honor.
I'm sorry, request for approval.
For approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, again if you will please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative. Okay. Under special presentations tonight, the first thing I would need to remind you of, nominations are now being accepted for the 2010 Edward I. Brusel Outstanding Citizen Award and will be accepted through February 28th, 2010, at the city administrator's office. Anything you want to add to that, Beth?
No.
Nothing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Proclamation. Proclamation for February, Joy of Reading Month. If I could, I will read this in. Whereas, reading is a skill that only gets better with practice and is essentially to a child's success in school. And whereas, there's more to reading than homework and class assignments. And whereas, there are an endless number of fun and interesting books out there waiting to be discovered. And whereas, older students can use their influence to encourage younger children to read more. And whereas, Norfolk's joy or Junior Optimist Octagon International members believe they can make a difference by encouraging their peers and younger students to read more books and thus improving their reading skills. And whereas, the city of Norfolk values its young service leaders and their efforts to make a difference in the community by mentoring younger readers and promoting catch-and-release book programs. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sue Footman, Mayor of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the entire month of February to 2010 as Joy of Reading Month in the city of Norfolk and encourage all citizens to take due note of this observance. Looks to me like we have a group that's here. If you want to come forward, we certainly will present the proclamation, give you our thanks for your efforts here. I'm going to bet you're all Joy Club members. Probably I've had opportunity to meet some of you before. You are?
Haley.
Haley. And you are?
Katrina.
Katrina.
Riley.
Kayla.
Kayla.
Courtney.
Courtney. Who's going to take the proclamation from us tonight and make sure that everybody within the Joy Club gets it? Okay. Thank you, girls, for being here. Mark, as always. All your efforts. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to amend the budget for a CDBG grant. I'm looking for Tom to come forward. I have opened the public hearing. Okay. One chair ahead.
Hi, Tom Higginbotham here with the Economic Development District. We're here to have a required public hearing when we amend the budgets. The public hearing notice explain the budget. We're basically reducing on the '07 CR Community Revitalization Grant, reducing the amount of acquisition from $95,000 to $75,000 and increasing, adding a new activity of housing rehabilitation to $60,000, '66. The entire grant amount, or the original grant amount stays the same, we're just allocating within activities. The purpose of this is to, and then we're also going to be asking for a six-month extension on this one, to allow the city some additional time to acquire some vacant property and then to allow for the rehabilitation of three owner-occupied units. The reason we're making this change is these grants are on timelines and it's either, you know, do something creative like this to create an activity like rehabilitation. The city has a huge need, anyway. It's better to, you know, to work within your budget instead of give some money back. So that's why we're going to put some money into housing rehabilitation. Also on the 2008 grant, we're doing a budget amendment there to reduce the acquisition and easements and to demolition and then put more of the money into actual down payment assistance. And on this grant, we're also going to be asking for a nine-month extension to allow more time for the three additional homes to be built and give the city suitable time to find some homeowners. As always, the CGBG funds are benefit low-to-moderate income families. So the incomes that the families that will purchase these properties have to be at or below 80 percent of the area median income. And we sat down, we've had quite a few meetings on these grants over the years, most recently here in the last couple of months, my office, the city staff, Habitat for Humanity and Neighbor Works, which are partners in this program. And based on, you know, basic construction of a house, you know, costs are what they are. And in order to make these homes affordable to the income limits that we're subject to, we need to put more down payment assistance into these homes to bring that cost down to families at those income levels to make them more affordable. So that's why there's an increase with the '08, increasing that down payment assistance. So, like I said, whenever you're rearranging the budget like this, it's a requirement to have a public hearing. So if there's any questions about this or anybody from the public wants to comment, I'll try to answer any questions.
Any questions at all, council? Anyone in the audience? Any questions? Tom? Seeing none? As always, we appreciate all your efforts. You're a great partner to work with.
I just had one little question. Who writes these grants, grant applications? Who does that? Do you?
Our office does.
Your office?
On the CR, on the Community Revitalization Program, if we go all the way back to 2005, the state of Nebraska created this pilot program for communities above $20,000, less than 50, which was about eight communities in Nebraska. We did a strategic planning process with the citizens of Norfolk and the council and the city staff to prioritize, okay, if we go for this grant, what can we use these monies for? So then what we do as part of the membership that the city of Norfolk pays, we write these grants on behalf of Norfolk and then also administer them and all that good stuff, so...
Any other questions? Comments? Okay.
I'll just stay up here for the next five, six, seven, eight items.
You're around for a while.
I'm around for a while.
Okay. All right. Then we will close this public hearing and I would ask for a motion for consideration of approval of the request for a letter to be forwarded to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development requesting the extensions as explained.
Yeah, basically, we're, we got a couple of letters there and we're requesting, the council needs, whenever you're doing a contract extension, the contract is between the state of Nebraska and the city of Norfolk. So we need to request a six-month extension on the first grant of the '07 and then additional nine on the '08. And I should mention that we, this, we've all kind of had preapproval with the state of Nebraska in our meetings with my office, the city staff and the other organizations. We've been in constant communication with the state of Nebraska so they know what our plans are and we discuss what we want to do and can we do this, can we do that? So they've been a part of this process the whole time. So we're just kind of going through the formalities here.
You ought to move consideration.
Second.
There's a motion made with a second for approval of forwarding a letter as requested here by Tom, if you will please vote.
Sue.
Yeah.
Do I need to, since I am on the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District Board, is I, is it okay for me to vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative. All right. Next is consideration of approval of forwarding a letter to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development regarding the proposed budget amendments. As discussed?
As discussed in the public hearing.
Right. Any further questions? If not, I would ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Motion made and seconded to approve forwarding the letter as requested. If you will please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative. And finally, consideration of approval of the Community Revitalization CDBG Down Payment Assistance Housing Guidelines.
So I'll move, Your Honor.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor with a second. Please vote. Do you want to address that at all, Tom?
Alls I was going to say is, since we're changing the activity to down payment assistance with the CDBG dollars, that we needed some guidelines. So basically, what I did was took the down payment assistance guidelines from the Meadow Ridge Project and tailored them to fit the CDBG program with it, you know, they're limited to, the target areas limited to 80 percent LMI, but these are new, but they're specific to the community revitalization targeted area.
We have a lot of faith in what you put together there.
And have been reviewed by the city staff.
Okay. All right. There's been a motion and a second? If you will please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative. And next, we'll have a public hearing to consider an application to Nebraska Department of Economic Development under the Community Development Block Grant Program for economic development activities regarding the former Proteant plant. Again, I would open the public hearing and look to Tom for guidance.
Yeah, just, the public hearing was published in the paper and it was also in your board packet, but basically, this is the standard CDBG Community Development Block Grant, Economic Development Grant. We've had these in the past with affiliated foods expansion, the MP Global expansion years ago with the original Proteant and Roman's Packing long before my time. So this is nothing new to the city of Norfolk. The proposal is the maximum grant amount's $500,000. So we're proposing to put together an application for $500,000 grant funds to the city of Norfolk. The city of Norfolk will turn around, loan these funds to Milk Specialties to purchase the building. And the total project is estimated at $10 million with the purchase and all the improvements that they need to make. $500,000 for general administration. Basically, they're going to be kind of doing the same thing that Proteant was doing with the milk products. This job, I believe they're out there right now. I think when we had the unfortunate propane fire, that we learned that there were some folks in there doing some things and they're in there. There's 24 jobs there right now with Milk Specialties. They're renting the facility and have, like I said, created 24 jobs already. With these grant dollars, they will commit to creating another 15. And to meet the CDBG low-to-moderate income requirements, at least 51 percent of those 15 jobs will be made available to low-to-moderate income. Just here to have the required public hearing. If anybody has any questions or wants to comment on the project, we'll let them do that. Like I said, once again, it's a, we're asking for a $505,000 grant. I should restate that. The $5,000 of that will be for administration of the grant. We'll have to monitor the jobs, make sure that they create the jobs they set and monitor those over the period of the grant. And then the $500,000 grant will be to the city. The city will turn around and loan those funds to the business to purchase. And their plans are to purchase, close at the end of this month. So we're moving forward fairly quickly and it's a great thing. It's a great thing to have this plant back and running, especially on the water sewer side of things. I know that that's a pretty nice load for the city of Norfolk, so, plus we're creating 30-some jobs, so...
Absolutely. Again, go ahead.
Tom, is the loan that we're making to them, is that repayable or forgivable in certain standards, Matt?
Uh, the first, yes. The first $250,000 will be a forgivable, 0 percent forgivable loan, provided the company says what they, they're going to do. And there's, there'll be an MOU and a contract between the business, the city and the state of Nebraska on those requirements. The second $250,000 will be 0 percent interest loan.
Any other questions for Tom? Anyone else in the audience that has any questions, wants to come forward and speak? Okay. Seeing none? Again, Tom, thanks.
Well, I'd like to say, I'm not, you know, I get to come up here and talk about CDBG, but this, this, all these projects have been a great partnership with the city, especially on the Proteant, you know, with the, Dave Simonsen's office, Elkhorn Valley Economic Development Council, the resource team, you know, have sat down for months with this company and talking about things. So I appreciate to get up here and talk about CDBG, but it's not our office all by ourselves doing everything. It's a, it's a partnership and it takes a partnership to get these things done, so...
Agreed.
But I'll take the credit.
You sure he did it well.
I'd just like to say, Tom, that I've heard good things too about everybody working together now and it looks like we're starting to pay off. So it looks like things are starting to move ahead.
Yeah, it works well. It works well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, then I will close this public hearing and ask for consideration of Resolution Number 2010-3 approving the grant application as put forward by Mr. Higginbotham.
Your Honor, I would move approval of Resolution 2010-3.
Second.
There is a motion with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? I would ask you to please vote. All council persons voting in affirmative, Resolution 2010-3 is adopted. Going to the regular agenda then, consideration of ordinance number 5104, amending section 3-5 of the official city code to allow for the sale of beer and wine for consumption on the premise to begin at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays. Clint, I'm going to look to you to give us a little bit, whoops, I'm sorry, a motion. Consider? Okay. Do I have a motion? Please.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance 5104. Your Honor.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I will look for discussion from you then, Clint.
The, the ordinance really is, that's before you for consideration is in response to the January 15th letter related to the state bowling, men's bowling tournament, which, and that letter's in your agenda packet. And in that letter, they asked to, let's read this, "They're requesting permission to serve alcohol starting at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays during tournament play only as our early shifts start at 8:30 and 10:30 a.m." The ordinance that you've got before you for consideration talks about not allowing, you can't do everything that they are asking you to do even if you want because the local option, which is available under the statutes in Nebraska, preclude the council from permitting the sale of alcoholic liquor on Sundays before 12 o'clock. You can permit the sale of beer and wine before, so as to allow it any time after 6 o'clock on Sunday morning. So the ordinance that we have here, in trying to put something before you that would go as far as you can go in honoring that request, would allow for the sale of beer and wine to start, instead of at noon on Sundays, it could start at 11 o'clock if the ordinance were approved.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense or not.
You're asking for one hour earlier is what we're looking at.
That's what it is, but it only can apply to the beer and wine.
Only beer and wine. Okay. Any questions? Carter, do you want to come up and speak to this at all?
Um, I can't.
You sure are welcome to and I would ask you to introduce yourself, state your name and...
Okay, I'm Carter Olson. I'm the general manager of Kings. I've been there for a little over two years now and we were fortunate enough to win the bid on the men's state bowling tournament this year. I had to, to try to acquire that bid about a year and a half ago. So we've been very fortunate in, in being awarded this, this tournament. We're expected to bring about 2,000 people to Norfolk. And for most of these bowlers, they will be staying overnight on Saturday nights, visiting Norfolk restaurants. We've really been working in conjunction with the Visitors Bureau to try to put some packets together for some, some coupons and things for these bowlers to really get out and get in the community a little bit. My, my whole goal here is to put on the best state tournament that I personally have ever been to. And for me, that, that goes down to details for me, to be honest with you. When you walk in, the center's clean, everybody's really polite, hey, they're doing something that other tournaments have not been able to do. And if all goes well, we bid on the women's tournament, which is even bigger, and we'll have a chance at that in a couple of years here. So I believe 2012 will be our opportunity to host that and we're going to make a strong push to host that alone. So this is just, you know, that's all down the road, but this is the precursor to try and, try and put on a great tournament, so... If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to, to answer them.
And Carter, this, this lasts for numerous weeks, doesn't it?
Yes. It begins February 20th of this month and it'll go out down, the last tournament date is the 23rd of April. It does, the state tournament does not bowl on Easter weekend. So if, on the letter that I sent you, that weekend was not included in my request, the other weekend that I did have included in there was May 1st and 2nd, which is a snow date, if we would happen to get, you know, snowed out. One day gets snowed out, they'll cancel both days because most of those guys, like I said, are here for the entire weekend.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to look at you, Clint, and say, are what we're considering here in ordinance for only those specific dates or is this going to be an ordinance that's in effect from here on forward?
This ordinance, if enacted, would be in effect for everyone, every Sunday.
Right.
Until or unless you changed it.
Okay.
So it's not just for the bowling alley and not just on those specific dates.
Right. So until it would come back to us, it would be 11 a.m. any Sunday morning?
Correct.
Should it be enacted? Okay. Appreciate the clarification. Any other questions or comments or concerns or... Carter? Thank you for being here.
The, I have a question for you that, and you have to excuse me if I'm not understanding, the shifts that you're talking about, that's when they start bowling then, 8:30 and 10:30?
The first shift is, is Sunday mornings at 8:00. I really didn't feel like that was appropriate to really start that early or even, or therefore request that early. I felt like if the 10:30 shift starts, those guys get started, we can start it a little bit early, guys are coming in at that time for the next shift. That was my, my reason for requesting 11 instead of any earlier. I didn't think any earlier would really be appropriate, so...
And that also means then that the 8:30 shift is done by 10:30?
The 8:00 will be done, yeah. Correct. Yes. Because this next shift will then start at 10:30, so...
Any other questions or discussion?
The only thing I would say is, is if, if we are willing to help Carter and somebody does have a problem with it, we can, like they said, resend this when his bowling tournament's over, so he gives us a way out. I have no problem with helping him out and, but if somebody does for the rest of the Sunday mornings, we can talk about that in May, you know?
Okay. All right.
Do you have a question that I had then also, and I don't know because I don't go to those tournaments, is, I mean, is the availability of the alcoholic beverages normally available at those early hours at, at other cities that have hosted it?
I can't, I can't answer that definitively because I don't recall personally whether they were or not. Now, I would say that the majority, they probably weren't. I know some just haven't even attempted, but I don't, I can't answer that definitively if, if they were or not, so... I don't normally. We usually just, Sundays, we, we, we don't drink, pull out my team and we just go home, but I know a lot of teams, you know, the guys, you know, one or two and then they're on their way, so...
Okay. Thank you, Carter.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, what do I need here, Beth? Short title? An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 3-5 of the official city code to allow for the sale of beer and wine for consumption on the premises to begin at 11 a.m. on Sundays, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. All right. Are we ready to call the question then? Please vote. Voting in favor of the ordinance, councilperson Coy, Reader, Wilson, Brenneman, Faust, Saunders, voting against the ordinance, councilperson Langy. Ordinance 40, 5104 carries in first reading.
Do we need to, I suppose we could meet it, would we need to go a little faster? Carter, would you like us to, to vote on it again tonight? So you, do you have pamphlets and stuff? You need to advertise it or, or can you wait till the middle of the month when we have our next meeting?
Um, if that would be better, I mean, we can wait. First date's going to be the 21st of February, the first Sunday's date.
I'm willing to suspend the rules and pass on second, third, if the council doesn't mind.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to suspend the second and third reading. Do I have a sec? I did have a second? If you will please vote. Voting in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, councilperson Coy, Reader, Wilson, Brenneman, Faust, Saunders, voting against the motion, councilman Langy. Motion carries. Ordinance 51, ordinance 5104 carries in second and third reading. Okay. Next would be consideration of the city of Norfolk joining the Nebraska Expressways for Economic Development.
You need a motion, Your Honor?
Ah, I bet I do.
I will make that motion.
I appreciate that.
Second.
And we'll have some discussion. Looking for explanation, Dennis?
This is a coalition of communities across the state that are working together to get the expressway system that was laid out in about 1988 funded and improved across the state, city. It's a coalition of communities that the funding is based on about five cents per capita per month. Be a total of roughly $14,000 a year for the city of Norfolk, so... I think West Point's the one that encouraged Norfolk to participate.
Any discussion on this?
And that, for that $14,000, it's for lobbying and stuff, is that...
I would imagine that that's one of their larger expenses, is lobbying expenses. Like I said, they're working on all the expressways that were a part of that original 1988 plan, so it's not just Highway 275 or Highway 81 or 30 or any of the others that may have been there. It's a coalition across the state that's trying to work together to find a mechanism to get them all completed.
This is basically just a membership fee, so... Right.
More or less.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? If not, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, I should have jumped in quicker or something.
Nope, that's all right.
You know, and I realize, you know, that it's a, you know, expense that we're going to incur that way, but I don't know how we can go to the podium and preach that we're in favor of 275 being completed to Norfolk in whatever time period is or, or any of the other roads coming in and out of this area if, if we're not willing to, to basically put our money where our mouth is at. So I, you know, even though it, it is some funds and it's funds in economically stressed times, I think we still need to look at the big picture and see that this is further down the road, so...
Okay. There's a motion and a second? Are we ready to vote? Please do so. All council persons voting in the affirmative. All right. Next, I need a motion for consideration of approval of a real estate purchase agreement between the city and the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce providing for the chamber's purchase of abandoned railroad property located at the southeast corner of 7th Street and Norfolk Avenue.
So I'll move, Your Honor.
Second.
Your Honor, at this time, I would like to declare a conflict of interest on these remaining items in regard to this and will be leaving my position if you would recall me when the discussion and the vote is completed.
We will, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Clint, do you want to fill us in?
The, the purchase agreement, the, the two items that are here, the purchase agreement and the, and the accompanying... the, and the accompanying ordinance, the purchase agreement provides for the sale of property for the total amount of $23,887.67, and involves the reservation of some easements, most notably in regard for water line that's on the property, and that's what the agreement, the agreement does. As to the, as to the ordinance, can I address that at the same time?
You certainly can.
If the ordinance is passed, in order to comply with the formalities involving the sale of property by the city, following enactment of the ordinance, there would be publication of that ordinance for, I think it's three times in the, in the newspaper, and then 30 days has to go by, and during which, if anybody's troubled by that, they can do remonstrance against it, and then only after that two months time period takes, takes, has occurred, without any remonstrance occurring, can we actually consummate the sale. So, if you approve this tonight, it'll be, you know, minimum of 60 days, and then we do the stuff with the title insurance and all that good stuff to get the matter complete, answer any questions that you'd have.
Any questions, why not the council?
How did, how did the price of $23,000 come up?
Dennis is probably...
Is that first square foot of what it paid for the other property?
We priced that property similarly to what we have done with many other tracts of property that the city has had for sale. We go and look at what the county has for the assessed value of the properties adjacent there to. So what we were looking at was the assessed value of the old Kentucky Fried Chicken site, and we take just the land portion of that. So that was what we used as a base, and then we discounted that price to reflect the easements that Clint identified that we would be retaining, withholding as we transferred that property, so that's how we arrived at the $23,000.
And, and the reason that you utilize the adjoining property is that because the property is owned by the city, there is no assessed valuation on it, so it's not that the assessed valuation is zero, it just hasn't been assessed. So, the notion would be that, for instance, in this instance, even though this is corner property, I think it was, was done at the value of the adjoining property, there could be an argument made that the, you know, so it's on the low side of reasonable at best, I think, in the, in the manner in which we've done it, taking into account that the, that the assessor is targeting something in the low 90% for commercial properties or whatever, so that's kinda how we got there.
If my question was just, if, in the best interest of, you know, working in a partnership with the chamber and everything, it's a piece of land that we really cannot do much with anyways, that, was it hurt just to give it to them or sell it to them for a dollar?
Well, this property would have some function as parking, in a downtown parking area where there is no requirements for on-street parking for each individual business. We did annex this a couple of years ago into the vehicle parking district, so it's a part of that district. That would be one potential use that the city would have for this property. And then there's some issues related to state statutes that require that the public gets fair value for the property that they are divesting themselves of.
There are still, oh, some things and some case law and the like that precludes you from making a donation to the chamber.
Gotcha.
So, and, one of the other things that is, that is also there is, this is also consistent with the mechanism that's been utilized and the valuation mechanism that's been utilized in recent years in regard to the railroad right-of-way, as it's been transferred in, you know, in many instances, I would say, in almost in an economic development assistance because you've allowed existing businesses to buy adjoining property that, you know, expand their property and so on and so forth, so it's also consistent with that.
You know, as Clint said, you know, we looked at this and tried to figure out how we could get to the lowest reasonable number in light of the, of the court cases and the state statutes and things, so.
Okay, thank you. I think this will be good for the chamber and for Norfolk when they get done doing what they're gonna unveil here. It's going to be special and it'll be, it'll be well worth it to join and get that done, so.
And we do have a letter from the chamber that, that they're agreeable with the price and the agreement.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, and there is a motion with a second to approve the real estate purchase agreement between the city and the Norfolk Area Chamber, if you will please vote. All council persons voting in the affirmative, Councilman Langy abstaining and Councilman Van Dyke absent, motion carries. And next would be consideration of approval of ordinance Number 5105, providing for the sale of abandoned railroad property located at the southeast corner of 7th Street and Norfolk Avenue to Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance Number 5105, first reading.
Motion with a second, any discussion? I think it's been pretty well explained. Ready for a short title? An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to authorize the sale of city property, to provide the terms of sale and authorize the mayor to execute and deliver a quick claim deed to the property, to provide for a remonstrance to said sale as provided by law, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. I would ask you to please vote. You want to turn him... All council persons voting in the affirmative, Councilman Langy abstaining, Councilman Van Dyke absent, ordinance 5105 carries in first reading. Next, under reports, I'm looking at balance sheet, anything that you want to go over for us, Randy?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Alright.
We can't pass a third of the land project, right?
Right, I, I think we prob, I'm...
Second. Correct. Oh, we can?
We can.
Alright.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 5105 on second and third.
Second.
Motion in a second to pass ordinance Number 510, I'm sorry, motion to suspend.
Sorry.
Second and third readings. If you will please vote. Voting, all council persons voting in the affirmative to suspend the rules and adopt ordinance 5105 on second and third reading, Councilperson Langy abstaining, Councilman Van Dyke absent. Okay. Alright. Everything's kosher, my fault, I thought too we might hand it, so. Anything else? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Can you get it?
Yes, I can do everything with my left hand or my right hand.